A call to order the meeting of the Town of Sebastopol Board of Supervisors for Monday, October 21, at 7:00. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Need a roll call to establish a quorum.
Supervisor Weidman.
Here.
Supervisor Teis.
Here.
Chairman Zipperer.
Here.
Supervisor Wolfle.
Here.
And Supervisor Stavenas.
Here.
We do have a quorum, all our presidents. Next agenda item would be a meet and greet with the people in the audience as well as our town clerk treasurer, for those who don't know, Linda Wait. So why don't we start in the front row, as long as Richard is here, and introduce yourself and where you might live in our town.
I'm Jack Wardman, I live at 4217 Everly Road.
John Wardman, I live at 4217 Everly Road.
It must make you pretty close to him.
I have good friends.
Victoria Saranich, I live at 4145 Cherry Road, and I'm also here as an observer for the League of Women Voters. Do you want me to wait?
Oh, just wait, alright.
Paul Casriel, I live at 4553 Glidden Drive.
Okay, and behind the video cam is Lady Chapman, normally has to take them out. Okay, public participation would be next. Victoria, you had an issue.
I brought this to the town's attention this afternoon. The League of Women Voters is taking a position against a bill that's presently at the Assembly and at the Senate, and it's involving, it's fast-tracking a bill that's going to remove the ability of local governments to control what happens within their boundaries related to monitoring and testing for air and water quality, and also repairs to their highways from damage done by vehicles, heavy equipment vehicles, that may be removing heavy materials like sand and gravel. However, it's not limited to just non-metallic mining. When you look at the bill, the bill just starts limiting the powers of local towns, villages, and counties to take care of what's in their borders. So the League is saying in its draft form, it's being circulated, it may be voted on October 24th, as early as October 24th at 9:00 a.m., and the League is asking local townspeople and their supervisors, that are their representatives, to contact their assemblymen or senators to oppose this bill at this time. Thank you.
Other than the sponsors for the bill?
Tiffany and I, Senator Tiffany sponsors it in the Senate, and I don't recall the...
Representative Joan Baldwin?
Okay. It was on the information I gave to the town clerk this afternoon, and I copied.
Okay, any other public participation wishing to speak on issues that are not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. The agenda has been properly announced?
It has been.
The motion would then be in order to remove that we accept the agenda as printed.
I'd love to second that.
Well, let's not get too lovey around here. Okay, any additions or corrections? That would be for the minutes of August 19, no, September 23.
September 23.
I think we're on the agenda.
Approval of the agenda. Reading.
Apparently my second threw him off, I apologize.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second to approve.
Correct.
Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financial report, August 2013, budget versus actual, and fund balances and the transactions.
If you go back to the minutes.
I'm sorry, where?
Do the minutes down the financial?
There's an error on the agenda.
What was? Do we have a motion on the minutes already?
Not yet.
Supposed to be September.
We had to back everyone to get the vote on the agenda.
There is a correction to the agenda. I have approval of minutes, August 19, and that should have been September 23.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
With the correction.
With that correction. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As carried. Okay, the approval of the minutes was by Chuck Teis, and the second by Dan. Are there questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
Your motion, your motion's behind. I'll make a motion, however, to approve the minutes, and Chuck, would you like the second?
I'll second. Okay. Alright, should we just back up and start over?
We'd have to go all the way back with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Financial report, August 2013, budget versus actual, and the fund balances and the transactions for the month through September 2013. Are there any questions?
Again, that should be September, not August. September, not August.
What are you suggesting?
I'm sorry, that as well, September, not August. I, too, am a month behind.
Okay. Well, I took all the blame for you, so don't worry about it. No questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we got five that time. Okay, that's carried. The oral committee reports and committee minutes, we had none. Do we have any oral committee reports?
I went down to the bottom, so I'll talk under new business.
Hello?
I said I'll talk under new business.
Okay. Did you have anything, Chuck?
No.
Licenses and permits are part of your budget packet. Bill and recap of independent inspection, and also the permits issued for new construction in our town. It's an FYI, continuing business, the status, discussion, and action. Roadwork 2014 would be the next item. We did have a local road improvement program meeting that was held on... Linda, you're gonna have to help me on the date.
Uh... It was a Tuesday, yes, I believe it was October 8. I'm not sure.
Okay, but anyway, our representative to the local road improvement program on the committee is none other than Linda Wait. So she's gonna make sure that we get all kinds of money for our road improvement.
As a treasurer, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Well, she watches the dollar pretty closely. The roadwork that we have outlined for the budget is not all cast in iron, so if you do have anything along those lines that you wish to have looked at, we can add to it. Most recently, as of yesterday, was a culvert that is being, it's a sunken culvert, or else it's affecting the Everly Road immediately west of Geisel Creek in the westbound lane. And it looks like we will be replacing that culvert, but we don't know when, if we have to do it yet this year, but it certainly will be on our agenda for...
You talking about the main, the main culvert?
No. West of the Geisel Creek.
Secondary culvert.
It's the one in front of Bruno.
Yeah.
Yeah. We looked at it on our road tour, and it's gotten worse. They don't know if they can temporarily fix it, but we'll, we'll get to it. Nothing else for 2014. So I mentioned the roads previously, if you have anything for the addition, bring it to our attention. The only other news that I can bring to you is that we are, it looks like we're gonna get participation from the DNR when it comes to estimated work on Shower Road. They've submitted an application as well, and we don't know what that dollar amount is, however, it will be at or more than what they did previously.
Good.
So the temporary fix is that it will, we'll have the county, the state DNR, the state DOT, and perhaps some more money from the county, but we'll try to finish that from Cape Point to the town line. The Coastal Byway Kiosk, the grand opening in October 31. Hopefully, you've gone past Forest Road, Grand Tommies, to see the pine production that we do have there. All credit goes to Chuck Teis, who has been the mover and shaker on the entire project, and is every bit an item that we can all be proud of. I stopped there today and took some pictures of my own, and while I was there, we had three other people that came out, and as cold as it was, I was gonna take the picture, but they escaped the benches before I had an opportunity. So it is getting some use, anyway, at this hour. So did you have anything further, Chuck, on the byway?
Well, we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 31st of October, starting... we're departing the Door County Visitor Center in Sturgeon Bay from their building, and that's the first kiosk, is on the property at that point. And we're leaving there at 8:30 approximately, and taking a tour with all the people involved. The town officials are invited, local media is invited, possibly some state representatives, reps from the Department of Transportation and Tourism Industry. So if anybody is interested in tagging along, we do not have a lot of room on the trolley for everybody, but if there is room, you're welcome to tag along, or you can follow along in your own vehicles. We'd start at the visitor center, come to the Sebastopol Kiosk, and then it's a toss-up at this point, whether we head to Jacksonport or Egg Harbor, and then start the tour around the system. Some of the kiosks will not be up yet, some of them are having some problems with them, some just can't get the manpower to get them installed at this point. So we will just most likely be visiting the ones that are up and ready to go. And for sure, they would be Egg Harbor, Jacksonport, Bailey's Harbor, Sebastopol, and Door County Visitor Center.
The transportation for that day is going to be sponsored and donated by the Door County Trolley, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the zoning classification information meeting is October 23. And John, did you have the particulars on that one, or no?
Yeah, well, it's gonna start at 6:00. We've had press releases out, they called, the Peninsular Pulse called, there was a write-up in the Pulse. She did get ahold of me on vacation, and I gave her a phone interview, and she talked to Mariah Good, and they had a nice little write-up in there. I don't know how many other papers it's been in, but it is in two days, and the mailing went out. Everybody should have one that is involved. So hopefully, a lot of people show up, whether you're for or against, it's an informational meeting, and we'll see how to proceed after that.
Okay, the next item then is the Door County Beach Testing Results. It was a cover letter from the Public Health Director on the culvert. It also showed the various tests at the local beaches that had been performed, and the, whatever the numbers were as far as equal eye. And for our town, that was for the Clark Lake Beach.
Can you see Clark's Lake Beach listed?
It is.
They had asked for dollars last time around, wanting us to participate because they were gonna lose a grant, and then what happened is they eventually were given the money from the state. So it was a thank you for the consideration, and they're closing and listing and monitoring results for the test. And it showed all the varied places in the county that they did, take their samplings and the dates that they were taken, and the value of equal eye at each time. New business items, discussion, action. The Fishburg Rad of Variants, Gail and Mariel Johnson, it was held earlier tonight by the Land Commission, and John, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. Gail and Mariel Johnson at 3745 Glidden Drive. They want to propose to build, construct a 28-by-24 garage with living space above it. In your packet, if you open it up to Exhibit 1, there's a picture of the road that goes there. They've been using it as a driveway, it's a, it is a town road, and they're too close to this for the setbacks. I know on here it says 50 feet, I think in the discussion it was 65 feet from the center line of that road. When they get their addition built, it would be 47 feet from the center line of the road. And if you turn one page back, it shows the lot there, they've been, I think since 1974, they've been using the driveway. They don't, the well was to the one side, the septic was to the other. On the bottom of that, there is one more lot towards the bottom of the page, which basically exists where they would probably be the only other people ever putting a, using that same road as a driveway. Behind there is the land trust area, so it's not being used as an access or anything to that. So it came to a vote, it was, they recommended to the town board, 5, 4, and 1 against. So the motion passed.
And the recommendation was?
Okay. I'm sorry, John, could you repeat the vote? Four, five in favor?
Five in favor and 1 against.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And it passed to let the setbacks go. So they're crouching on the setback. You want us...
That was for the grant of variance, correct?
The grant of variance, correct.
Okay, the petition actually was for a 28-by-24 garage.
Right.
With the living space 50 feet from the center line at Evergreen Lane, a platted but undeveloped town road.
And like their lawyer said, that if we didn't, if we didn't own that road, it wasn't platted, they wouldn't even have to have a variance. So...
Does the road run the full 190 feet?
No. It's, you can see on the, on this drawing, it cuts off half, about halfway through their property, and turns in. I don't know if that...
I've just got a picture of an existing driveway.
Turn the page, Chuck, to Exhibit 1.
The existing driveway is the road.
That existing driveway is the road.
But does, does the platted road run the total distance or the length of their lot?
No, it, let's see, that's on the...
Stops right where their houses is.
No, it doesn't, Chuck, and about two-thirds of the way down.
John, because it does, it's platted because it's not gravel.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. It's platted, you're right, it is platted, the length of their property, and then there is another road behind there that is not platted but drawn.
Is that the lock road, or whatever it is back there?
The Schmoke Road.
Schmoke Road, yeah, okay.
You choose the all the way Schmoke Road originated is.
Right.
It's part of the problem in that area, it was the...
Behind there is the...
Plot developed by Schmoke and Rogan?
Yeah, they're back there.
No, that's, that's not their development, that, theirs is farther north. This was Glidden and Schmoke, yes, Glidden, Schmoke.
Okay.
Yeah, that was that other road that he had put back there. That, that was lots that never sold, did they?
Which one?
They never developed anything back there, because that's why that road was never finished off.
Correct.
Okay, but the petition was approved, and the recommendation to the town board is what?
The recommendation is for, to grant the variance, or recommend to the RPC, I'll make a motion to recommend to the RPC to grant the variance for Gail and Mariel Johnson.
Same.
Motion made in second to grant the variance by Gail and Mariel Johnson at 3745 Glidden Drive. Any further discussion?
Just one comment.
Yes.
Do you think at some point in time they're gonna ask us to take and do something to that town road? Because I would say that we do not approve that unless there's stipulation that says that the road stays as is.
That was brought up.
So otherwise, I would say I'm in favor of it, but I don't wanna come back in a year and say now that we've made it a permanent driveway, it's a town road, I want it paved.
Alright, let's hear from John, and then I'll go by Dick. Alright.
That was brought up. There were some suggestions that we tried to abandon it, get, or just let it go, let them buy it, there was three or four different suggestions. We were gonna bring that up as an agenda item farther down the line.
Right. This situation exists at, more than this site.
Correct.
Yeah, the road that's denoted, the public access road to Lake Michigan that's denoted as Evergreen Lane, is in fact a driveway for another residence, and also Goldenrod Lane, which is another town-owned access to Lake Michigan, has actually two homes, one on each side of it, that use Goldenrod Lane as a driveway. So we have more than one issue.
None of them have asked for a variance to use it, to build off of it.
Well, they're not really using, they're already using it. They've been using it since 1974.
Really back up, no one...
They have, they have never asked to, for us to plow it, or anything before, and as was brought up, too, is if, somebody would have to bring it up to the specs before we would plow it. Now, the 18-foot wide was shouldering, and before it would get plowed.
So, I mean, this issue exists already.
No, because I know what you're referring to, as far as the other lanes, but those people have not come forward and asked us for variance to use it and to build in our footprint, more or less.
But they have already, but they have.
Yes, they have already.
They have?
Yes.
Okay, I remember either of those, okay.
Yes, they have, if, as Dan said, there has been at least one case, two cases I know of, where they had requested variance to go closer, and they were both granted.
I don't have a problem with it, as long as we don't expect it to turn around and do something extraordinary with it.
But this is inland, right? This is not water.
Yeah, this is inland.
The two examples I had mentioned were on the water, but it makes it...
Right.
Okay. Richard, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so the motion, Linda, how do you have that recorded?
Motion by Stavenas that the, motion by Stavenas to recommend to the RPC to grant the variance for Gail and Mariel Johnson at 3745 Glidden Drive, second by Weidman.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item may be the 2014 budget proposal, was part of your information packet, indicating a final product that will be acted on in, on November 18. The clean copy has been provided with all the updates that we had from our work session. We did have some other items that hopefully we incorporated into the final product. The clerk treasurer made a category change, which one was that, Linda?
I switched, I renamed sesquicentennial items to town promotion items. We have had requests for our Sebastopol stories and for baseball caps, so I added $400 in the expense side and $400 in the revenue side. It's a wash, it does not affect the amount of levy at all. If anything, we should be making a profit on it, so...
Okay, do you have, what is the line item number there?
It is, um, page 2, line 41 for the expense, town promotion expense formerly known as sesquicentennial. And then on the revenue side, under miscellaneous, line 138 on page 5. Those would be sales. Obviously, we're going to sell them for more than it costs us, so... But I just kept, kept the numbers.
Alright, those two changes came about. There was an attempt as well to reduce the salary schedule in work session, and it was determined to not be a valid concern at the time, it needs to be accomplished by the town electors at a qualifying meeting. So if there is to be any change along those lines, we have to... So if there is to be any change along those lines, it will have to come up at November eighteenth. Those salary changes would not be effective until April of two thousand fifteen. By the way, there were not an increase in salary, but a rather reduction of, recommended reduction of seven hundred dollars each. For tonight's purposes, just as Linda had changed the promotion category, we could entertain any other recommendation as far as the changes that might come about and give you food for thought when it comes to the November eighteenth finalization of the in-budget. So do we have anything from the supervisors that would suggest the change in any of the categories? And as you come about, give me a number in expenditure, revenue side, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Item number nine, it was suggested that we eliminate per diems. I would suggest that we reconsider this in light of sometimes that we have professional people serving on committees. And I think it would be to our advantage to at least reimburse professional people that serve on our committees.
I don't think we.
How are you going to, how are you going to consider professional people? I'm a telephone man, I'm a professional person.
I, I was thinking about the, our planning and zoning commission. We have Peter Hirth, who's really, who's really done a lot of the background work on, on this whole effort to rezone these areas. Unless we want to consider, you know, paying him on a professional basis, it's just a consideration. But we do have people like that that serve on the committees.
I think you're opening up a can of worms if you pay one and not another.
But we didn't stop. No, that would be for the.
We didn't stop the per diem anyhow.
That would be for any of the committee members that wish to participate.
See, that was my suggestion that we'd eliminate the per diems and the mileage, but at the budget meeting, that was kind of shot down. And we do have the dollars back in there.
Yeah, if you look at the draft budget two thousand and thirteen in Leonard G., you'll find that the fifteen hundred dollars, it's less than what we had budgeted last year, but it looks, appears to be adequate to.
I, I, you know, just as long as that's a consideration.
Okay, that'll stay.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any other?
Yes, and I, I would like to, for discussion purposes on November, look at increasing our, our highway road construction budget from what it was.
Okay, where, where are you looking at? What's the number?
Fifty-seven. At, in two thousand twelve, we actually had three hundred and seventeen thousand.
Yep.
And we're reducing it down to, to basically what we received, what we budgeted, what we received from the state for road construction, road repair and all related. I certainly would consider that we raised that, that amount closer to what we had budgeted in two thousand twelve.
I think two thousand twelve, though, was the year that we had all the goofy carryover from doing the park, and it was not representative of a typical year of what we had ever spent. Because we had that road construction, we had monies that were retained from one year into the next, things that got moved from one year into the next. And it was, it was a, it was a boondoggle to decipher it, but I think it ended up a hundred grand over what we thought it was, Linda, was that not right?
Correct, and we did not budget three hundred and seventeen, we budgeted one hundred and eighty and ended up spending three hundred and seventeen.
Well, you know, considering that two, two and a half inch overlays cost about seventy-nine, eighty thousand dollars a mile. And we, we are committed, we have committed some money to the Shower Road project, if that goes through. I just think it would be wise to, to kind of spread this out, this cost out, rather than face it in another budget year where we have to do two or three miles of overlay at the cost of eighty thousand dollars a mile.
What's the dollar amount you'd like to enter there?
Well, I'd say at least a hundred thousand dollars.
Raise it that much?
Right.
Or go to two hundred thousand?
Well, a hundred and eighty thousand comes in right from aid, that's what we project, but that covers everything. Snow plowing and road repairs.
No, snow plowing is separate.
What is the hundred and eighty thousand that we have?
Road construction.
That's strictly for road construction.
And uses it for some.
But we use it for other purposes.
No, our general transportation aids are one hundred and eighty thousand forty-seven dollars. You'll see that on the revenue side. That's what we can expect to receive from the state to help cover the costs of maintaining, constructing, plowing, patching our roads for the year.
What number was that, Linda?
On the revenue side, it would be on page.
One oh nine.
Page four, line one oh eight, I'm sorry, line one oh nine, that's our highway aids. And that figure is fixed, that's what it will be for two thousand and fourteen.
So the offsetting or the expenditure side would, is thirty thousand dollars less than that?
Except we have snow plowing, maintenance and everything else that we use that one hundred and eighty.
All right, where do we want to go with the, the draft budget for two thousand and fourteen?
I think if you want to increase a number somewhere, you should come up with, where is the money coming from? Now, we've, we've got to take it from somewhere, or we're going to raise the levy higher yet. Kind of made our decision that we got the levy as high as we can comfortably move it. There's no dollars left unless you take them from another part of the budget.
I think estimated costs on the revamp of the continuation of Shower Road came in from one thirty-two to one forty-one thousand. So if we're going to do that, we are very much on the short side already. But if we have the participation from the DNR, the Door County Parks and the DOT with a local road improvement grant, that could reduce our contribution to about thirty thousand of the entire one forty-one. So in that regard, I can see where the revenue side is a little bit higher and maybe we won't be spending that much more.
I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think we should do Shower Park if, if we're going to pay an exorbitant share of that.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so.
This is all contingent on the participation by the DNR. I have insurance that Door County Parks will be all right. And we're going to submit that proposal to the local road improvement project. So it'd be twenty thousand, twenty thousand more, and the DNR either fifty or seventy. So of the total, we are down to about thirty thousand just on that road alone.
And that, that's why I just worried.
Now, if I got this right, if we just bump that road construction up a hundred thousand dollars, that would just add at the end, right? So then we would be another hundred thousand dollars in debt starting out from next year.
Yeah, a ten.
No, we, we got to try to find that somewhere in our budget by moving.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I agree with Chuck, that if you want to raise it that much, you find something that you can give up.
Well, if, if, if you want to maintain a flat budget, yeah, that would, that would be the way you would do it. But a ten cent per thousand, ten cents per thousand increase would generate about a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we would start an extra hundred thousand dollars in the, in the hole next year.
I think what he's, what he's proposing is that we raise the bill rate, so instead of a four point nine percent increase, we could have a ten percent increase.
Well, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't increase at ten percent.
No, but it would take it from four and nine to probably.
So, I mean, we're at eighty, what are we projecting, eighty-five cents per thousand right now?
Eighty-eight and three, eighty-nine.
So ten cents, yeah, I guess ten cents would be close to that, probably about nine percent.
Right.
So on a three hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be about thirty dollars.
We do have, there's a, another part of the budgeting process that we need to be aware of. Linda, you want to tell us about the levy and what, what we lose in the event we allocate more dollars?
I think we talked about this when we had our budget work session on the third, that I don't have the limit, yes, I do have the levy limit. Okay, right now, our levy limit is the five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, whatever we have on page six there, I believe.
Five eighty-seven eight twenty-four.
Five hundred and eighty-seven eight twenty-four, that is the maximum levy we can charge per the Department of Revenue. And the reason that we, and we even got an extra three thousand because our construction, we did so well on new construction last year, or this year. But just remember, whatever you bump up that maximum by this year, you subtract that from the starting line for next year.
Where's that, where did you get that from?
It's on the levy worksheet, and I should have distributed that to the board, I am.
Is there return, I mean, can we?
No.
Returning back to our base levy?
Yeah, if you, I, I will pass this down the line here, this is what the municipal levy worksheet looks like. We start out with five hundred and eighty-seven right here, that's our maximum. Just remember, next year, whatever you tacked on top of that comes off for your baseline.
The five eighty-seven eight twenty-four is our maximum levy. We cannot exceed that without going to referendum, right?
No, we can.
Um, you can exceed by debt.
No.
You cannot exceed the maximum levy without a referendum from the public allowing us to exceed it. We can levy for general obligation debt over and above that. But every dollar we do that is going to be subtracted from our maximum levy next year. So we have lost money this year, we're down to five eighty-seven. If we take the forty-six thousand and of general obligation debt, we lose that off of the maximum next year. We could be down to about five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
I'm not sure.
And we keep digging that hole deeper and deeper every year we go over the levy. So it's time to stop going over the levy, pay the piper and start cutting the budget.
I'm not sure that's correct, Chuck, because we can, because of the population of Sebastopol, we can, through a resolution at our town meeting, exceed our levy amount. We do not need to go to referendum.
But you still have to go back to the town.
And then, well, at our, yeah, at our annual town meeting, where we, when we approve the budget in November, we can, through a resolution of the people that are attending that meeting, exceed the levy limit. What that means also, as I understand it, is that that means next year then we have to return to our base.
No, next year you will be cut by what you went over this year.
Well, I'd like to see that documentation, because everything I've read states that unless we introduce new fees to the township for services, that we return to our, our base levy. And that any, any additional fees that we, we subject the town to are ones that will be used against our levy for next year.
That is correct, we don't have any at this point.
Right.
There's only certain fees that fall.
Right.
Which we do not levy for any of those fees right now.
Yeah, so we would return to our base, to the base that is determined by the formula, the revenue formula. We can exceed that revenue formula through resolution at a town meeting. So before a town meeting in November, we should probably, you know, get this all stated to the people who attend the town meeting for approval on the budget.
Well, we have to publicize this entire thing prior to the town meeting to begin with, so everything would be in the paper.
That's correct.
Percent, proposed percent of increase prior to the meeting.
Right. That would be on the, the notice on the minute.
There's specific language for exceeding the levy, and I don't have it at my fingertips right now.
Well, you can't exceed it, his, his point is correct, they changed that with the population by raising it from twenty-six hundred to three thousand this year. So it could be done at a town meeting, but I'm not the guy that wants to do the presentation to these people to suggest it's going to be a ten percent increase.
But I think realistically speaking, especially when it comes to town road construction and repair, is that we can, we can keep putting off certain projects, but down the road, at the present cost of repairing these roads, we're going to have to look at significantly increasing our budget to cover some of the road repairs that. Well, I can tell you, for instance, Glidden Drive, Forest Road.
Glidden Drive, that's county, we don't take care of that.
Glidden Drive, okay, Forest Road, for instance, I know the east, two miles, probably within a couple of years, are going to need to be probably repaved. So I mean, it's just, I think it's prudent to be able to take on some of these projects on a timely basis, rather than waiting and putting them off and putting them off until we get hit with a much larger bill.
We have a road improvement policy or system set up now with the eighty-five miles of town roads we own and the life expectancy of a road of over twenty years, that doing several miles a year, every year, we stay ahead of the problems.
But we're not doing several miles this year.
Well, we got cut short a few years, but in other years, we've made up difference too.
So I mean, in years where we have to pay the piper and do some road construction, we're, we're going to be looking at a much more serious situation.
Well, we have that same problem with everything else, our capital equipment, our contingency fund to replace that equipment over time. And these are all things that are cropping up that haven't been adjusted or planned in the budget for several years, so.
Yep, so that's what happens with a flat budget, if you maintain a completely flat budget, you leave no room for, for any type of investment.
All right, the issue here is, going back, where did you want that dollar amount to go to on expenditure for, I believe it was, what was the number for highway? Hello?
Did you have? Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we put a hundred thousand dollars into road construction.
What is the total amount?
Well, we've, in public works under.
So you want to do two hundred and fifty thousand on road construction? On line item fifty-seven.
Line item is fifty-seven.
Okay, as I indicated earlier tonight, we're not going to make those changes tonight. We're going to mill them over, bring them back and vote on them, then on November eighteenth be part of the total. In the interim, we can find out what that kind of increase is going to cost us. I think it's bad policy for us to go out and borrow any kind of money. For our operation expenditures, I do give credit to other town boards many years ago who went out and borrowed three hundred thousand to do the roads. And that was to the likes of Harvey Junior and those people that were around then, and they did the entire roads, all of them, at one time.
That's quite a while.
You can see what happens to the dollar amount when we do one mile a road. So if we can stay within reason on the operating budget, I'm comfortable with that. If we need to do others with the capital expenditures, as in highways and road construction down the line, I think what we did previously, we had a shortfall in the one year that we far exceeded what we had budgeted. So it actually got to three hundred and seventeen from. So, it actually got to three hundred seventeen from where we were initially at.
One eighty.
No, that would have been the previous year, twelve. But anyway, I think what we did in holding down our construction this past year was to pay back to the system and hopefully, at the end of the year, if we don't have any more bills coming in, we're going to find that we do have maybe about that hundred thousand or better in our cash reserves. Your point is well taken. You don't let your roads go to pot before you do something with them, so. All right, any other comments on?
I've got a couple of thoughts, a couple of proposed changes.
Okay, were you still on highways or no?
No, this is the entire budget or portions of it.
Okay.
Line thirteen, election supplies. In 2015, we're going to be looking at an approximate eight thousand dollar expenditure on new equipment for voting. We have not taken any action as to where this money is going to be coming from. I think we should start putting something aside today to pay that bill. I understand that there's some action out there to get some assistance in helping to pay for this. My original thought was to add four thousand dollars to line thirteen, election supplies this year. But I would be open to lowering that a little bit if we do have any good ideas that we could get funds from other places. Another item I would like to see added back in is two thousand dollars for the newsletter. I believe that newsletter is something important to this town.
Where are we at, line item?
Newsletter's eighty.
Which one?
Line eighty.
Newsletter would be line eighty on page three.
All right, good.
Yep.
So, we had projected no, nothing for two thousand and.
My proposal to try to come up with a few dollars, I didn't come up with a hundred percent of the six thousand I just added to the budget, but I did come up with around four thousand. My proposal would be that we take and allocate all the cable franchise receipts and the videography income into a new fund called the Technology and Communications Fund. That would be twenty-eight thousand dollars projected at today's budget. From that fund, we would pay office equipment and support of sixteen hundred. We would pay the newsletter expense of two thousand. We would put four thousand aside for the new voting equipment. We would pay the telephone expense of fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. The internet and website expense of fourteen hundred dollars. The cable operations expense of forty-five hundred. The program director for the cable operations, sixty-eight hundred. The videography per contract expense of eighteen hundred. And the videography recording of twenty-five hundred. That would leave a balance of nineteen hundred and fifty dollars, which I would propose that we put into the cable capital equipment fund. Now, if we do that this year, cable capital equipment definitely gets hit hard. But in the future years, that voting equipment expense will be gone. And the, one other one that was going to disappear.
Oh, you would increase in your.
So, eventually, the fund would come back over several years that that capital equipment fund for the cable operations would continue to increase. So, that would be one way to help solve our problem for the short term here.
Sure. You're projecting the cable franchise increase of three thousand dollars?
We had a franchise receipt of twenty-five hundred, or twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yep.
And the videography income was projected at around three thousand.
Okay, all right.
Total of twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Well, I think the. I like putting all that together. What did you, what do you have, technology, communication?
Technology and communications. And when you put it all together, it would include all the technology and communications, equipment, and materials for the town. Now, the other, the other thing was, that I had said would eliminate would be the thousand dollars set aside today for the new computer for the town. So, right away, next year, your cable capital equipment fund would go up at least a thousand dollars. In the second year, you'd lose that four thousand again for voting machines, provided we didn't find other money. If not, the fund would go up four thousand dollars after that.
Chuck can ask a question?
Sure.
On line ninety-four, how would that number be affected?
That number today is fifty-two hundred dollars. My proposal would bring it down to nineteen hundred and fifty dollars.
We can run the station on that kind of money.
That's capital equipment. We're running the station one hundred percent already. We paid the director, we paid the videography contract, the recording fees, we're paying internet and cable operation expenses, all out of the funds.
We can't keep up with technology that way. We have an old server in Aljicar place. And I'm not replacing it because we can't afford it. We should be saving money for replacement next year.
You're telling me we cannot operate on the equipment we have today for one year without destroying our TV station?
Without keeping it current, we will lose something somewhere. You may be satisfied with it, but we will lose something somewhere.
But in the future years, we can gain it back.
Yeah. There's a slight possibility too that partnering with the school, I think, you know, I, that we could get a Raybrook Fund grant, I think, Laddie, to help offset that. I mean, I'm confident that the school is willing to partner on, maybe not so much the expenses, but to get a partnership developed between the town.
I don't think the school is willing to make up our shortfall. They're willing to add on perhaps in further benefit.
Right.
But I don't think they're going to pay us for what we aren't doing.
All right, it's only a suggestion tonight and.
But it's my thought that any new project that we take on today should include every option, or every opportunity to try to find grant dollars or extra funds.
We're going to try to do that.
And I said, we've talked about the tourism dollars, the room tax dollars that we take in. And just for some statistics, bear with me while I find my note. Since five eighteen of two thousand seven to ten twenty-one of two thousand and thirteen, the room tax dollars contributed or added to the town's coffers was four hundred forty thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars. Out of those funds, we have spent sixteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars to the Door Colony Coastal Byway System, with the fact that fifteen thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars are coming back in grant money. That leaves a total of twelve hundred and forty-seven dollars, or seventy-four dollars that we've spent. This year, the town applied five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars toward the work on the kiosk. That's a total of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Out of that four hundred forty thousand, that went to tourism-related business. So, to say that cable money, the franchise fee, only belongs to the cable operations, I think is not a way to look at the funding that the town has. We have to utilize our dollars to the best advantage, and I believe, what I've just laid out here, I understand is going to hurt your operation a little bit, but you're going to gain the money back in the end. So, and, and if you look at it from the standpoint that the PEG channel does not raise a dollar for the town.
Raises three thousand, you just put it on your budget.
That's the videography that's over and above, but the PEG channel itself does not make money. You don't sell advertising, you, you know, it doesn't bring in a dollar, it just spends dollars.
Need a new roads, bring in money.
All right, let's not get in an argument about this. Richard, is there any chance you could meet up with your committee and give a little consideration to what Chuck is proposing?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we started the process at Sevastopol School.
I'm concerned about the committee, our town committee, our town cable committee.
Right, right.
And its members.
Right.
And fly with them, they should have the interests of our town budget at hand as well, so.
Sure.
Bring those numbers to them, and hopefully, you can have an answer by November eighteenth for us.
Okay. Chuck, do you have a copy of that?
I'll make your copy.
All right.
All right. Is there anything further? Let's limit it to the communications. Newspaper, you're happy with your newspaper going back again?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we took it out trying to shave every dime we could to keep the budget expense down, and I think it's a worthwhile effort, so I have no problem with that. And instead of two issues, we'd be back to doing one, but that's still fine.
Very well. Okay, let's get back. What, do we have any other items that we should be considering, not considering, or take another look at with the budget that was, the clean copies submitted for tonight's review?
I was wondering at the end if we were going to allocate half of the fifty thousand dollars, allocate like twenty-five onto the total. And I think Linda's got it here as.
Where are you at?
In the very last page.
It would be page seven.
Seven, okay.
Okay, let's all get to page seven. What line?
Well, it'd be off, or is it on the total? I'm sorry, it's on, I think it's on.
Page six. Cash balance applied?
Cash balance applied, yeah.
That's one forty-nine.
Correct.
It's on page.
Page sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Forty-nine.
Okay.
Because if I, this forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-two, we have to start out in the hole for that next year, right, Linda?
Um, well, it's not really in the hole. It's coming off your maximum levy.
Next year.
Next year.
So, I thought if we.
Whatever you exceed your levy by.
You keep digging that hole deeper.
Yeah. All I hear, I just heard two people raising the budget that we worked, had a work session that we worked three hours on, so I'm not the only one digging a hole.
No, I, what I'm saying is though, you asked the question, forty-six thousand does damage next year's levy limit.
Forty-six thousand does, but I'm saying reduce it by.
From what? From what? With what? Excuse me, with what?
From the cable franchise, because we had fifty thousand in there, right?
No, we did, we only had twenty-five thousand.
Cable franchise is twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
I did not raise the budget though, John. I took the twenty-five thousand and split, spread it out over other expenses.
I mean, I think our whole focus on this budget was to try and reestablish some reasonable level of designated, excuse me, designated fund, of having a cash balance rainy day fund, since we had gone down to virtually nothing a year ago. So, that's why we cut back on the roads. That's why we cut back on everything to try and reestablish that we had some pocket change, for lack of a better word, right? So, I think anything we change here is just going to hurt our objective, which is what we started with from day one, to try and build back revenues so that we have some rainy day funds available, which we don't.
See, that revenue got taken because we kept stealing out of it.
I agree with you.
You know, so I was saying we should just maybe split it in half and get half back this year, but I don't.
Okay, any other items for the, for a second look at the budget, on the budget worksheet? Do you have another item done or not?
No.
Dan? Do you have anything?
I have off the top of my head, thank you.
Okay, Chuck, were you, did you have others or not?
I've got a few other concerns, but might not be the proper time to bring them up.
Richard?
Not at this time.
You said what?
Not at this time?
No. All right, well, the information provided, I think we had a.
Well, let's get your.
You could have four different versions of it, Linda, feel free.
Mr. Chairman?
Or it could be, but.
Also, Mr. and Mrs. Bowden, the spreadsheet is connected to that agenda if you, if you wanted to take a look at it. Anyway, I need to publish this at least fifteen days before November eighteenth. So, do I use these numbers on the sheet that we came up with as of November, as of October sixteenth? Or am I, am I going to have new numbers or?
How many papers do you have?
I've got one question for the clerk.
All right.
In the restricted funds, we have the first responders, EMR donations, there are ten thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars there.
Yes.
That dollar, those dollars were raised to help purchase the defibrillators that needed replacement.
Correct.
The total funds were not used. We have ten thousand, seven hundred eighty-five left. Can we use those dollars to support the maintenance on this equipment now? The first responders are asking for forty-nine hundred dollars in supplies and equipment, I believe it was called.
Mm-hmm.
Can we take that money from the restricted fund?
That would take a board resolution to restrict those funds. And perhaps that could be something that the first responder committee could think about. As, as you indicated, they were donated for the purposes to purchase those D-Fibs. We got a really good deal on the purchase price.
Correct.
Through Northern Door Communications, so the money is there, but it would take a formal resolution to move that out of restricted funds.
I can take it to the.
Well, you're going to be needing, what is it, batteries for your radio?
Well, we're going to, yeah.
Batteries for.
Batteries for the defibrillators are going to cost, I don't know about these, but the last ones were two hundred and fifty dollars. Each battery, yeah.
Like Die-Harts?
Yeah.
So, the D-Fibs have to be programmed as well, battery?
No, the program is already in them.
How do we support that?
How do we support that through our budget, so.
We could redirect the dollars if they were supported by the EMRs, perhaps?
Because a lot of people donated it for the defibrillators, and once we sent out the mailing, a lot of people were real happy to donate for that fund.
Okay, do you, do we have any other added expense for the defibrillators to work properly?
Well, yes, there's always, there's always maintenance, because the pads that we have, every, I think, two years, that they have to be replaced because they get outdated and the sticky part of them goes bad. So, there's always maintenance on them, where I'm not exactly sure how much the pads are. So, there would be maintenance for the pads, maintenance for the batteries. A few of them have to go in every so often to get checked, whereas, you know, some of them have problems. I think there was a three-year warranty or four-year warranty on these. So, that would be covered for the first couple of years, but after that, then there would be, you know, maintenance on them.
Okay.
So, what would have happened with the money, if we leave it intact, would you just use it over the next X number of years for replacement D-Fibs?
We could, yes.
Are we going to add any more EMRs?
I have no idea. They were.
Are we holding at fifteen or what?
I think we're sitting at fifteen right now, and I think a couple of years ago, they made a resolution from the board that we could go up to twenty, so.
Are you somewhat constricted or constrained by? Are you somewhat constricted or constrained by EMS group of the county on how many you should have?
No, that's just because with the expense of the other equipment that we have in our bag, you know, with the radio pager, the bag is, got air, oxygen, all that stuff, the board started it out the way back when, that we had fourteen, and I think we had a couple of people, like four people go through the class, we added some, we've lost some, so they bumped it up to twenty, and that's where they put the cap at, far as I know.
For the board's information, the EMR budget did include one thousand dollars for equipment maintenance, and most of our equipment is, of course, connected to the DFIBs, um, or related to that. So, you know, maybe that's something that the EMR group could think about utilizing a thousand dollars of that ten thousand to support the DFIBs over the next ten years, that would.
There's ten thousand, or there was what, seven thousand?
Uh, right now, in the defibrillator account, there is ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
What line is that on?
That is on line one hundred and seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-seven, yes. And those are restricted funds.
Okay. But would that, would that be up to us as the first responders, or would that be up to the board?
It would be up, it would be a town board resolution, since the account is in the name of the town.
Because the, yeah, I'm just, you're walking a fine line, that money was donated for the defibrillators.
For defibrillators, correct.
Pulled out and put in for anything.
Well, if we got a defibrillator expense maintenance.
Correct.
We can use it for.
Or other EMR expenses.
For building roads, right? Okay, do you have another expenditure account for EMR somewhere?
Um, yes, we have a, we have like, I think, four different expenditure accounts go under public safety, so on lines forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine.
Okay.
So first responder supplies, lines forty-nine. Of that forty-nine hundred, one thousand was allocated for equipment maintenance, per the proposed budget.
That's kinda nitpicky when, I mean, when you're talking about adding a hundred thousand dollars to the road budget.
We could put it all.
But I mean, I could see where.
I think the original thought was maybe.
A thousand dollars a mile, you know.
I think this is just readjusting the funds though, I mean, the funds are there, they were intended for the DFIBs, but they weren't ne- needed, so either you give the money back to the donors, or you go ahead and spend it on other, what I would suggesting was that it stay in the EMR program, but it, use it toward the maintenance of the equipment now.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, I agree.
I could agree with that. Cause yeah, we have them all established, and if we would add two new, two new members or whatever, we would have to buy them defibrillators, and if correct, I think they were about fifteen hundred dollars, Linda?
Yep, fifteen hundred.
So that would add up three thousand, so.
Linda, if you publish something in the paper, it's still subject to change at the meeting, correct?
Correct, mhm, but I do need to publish something.
I was just gonna go there, we can, yeah, we can publish that as well. Just so that you're aware, we're not pulling out on the first responder group, in that they're, on forty-six, seven, eight, and nine, there is about nine thousand dollars. Four, seven, nine, ten, almost eleven, more than that, eleven thousand five, I would guess, I'm still gonna go to the group, so.
Okay. But I commend the group for, for their efforts in doing this fundraiser, and coming up with the money when the town couldn't afford it, so. They did a fantastic job, they're, they're a very worthwhile organization. My concern today is that the dollars are sitting there, why not utilize it, so.
Well, yes, but I just don't wanna get into a, you know, thing where they're saying, we donated this for defibrillators, but I guess if they donated it for defibrillators, it could be for maintenance too.
Okay.
On the defibrillators.
All right, getting back to Linda's question, what do I publish? If you were to take, let's see, you need, you need to publish by November three?
Mm-hmm.
And today is, uh, October twenty-one?
Thirteen days.
Well.
I will, and my deadline will be, let's see, it will have to go into the absolute latest, will be November second paper, which means my deadline is Wednesday, October thirty-first.
Okay. Well, about the only other thing we could do is use the existing numbers with bullet points to the bottom, the recommended changes and/or that may take place. We aren't gonna end up a final product until after the electors approve it anyway, but you do need to let them know what we started with and where it may be heading, and the final product will come from that meeting on November eighteenth. If you want, I can, uh, I'm really concerned about the effort that Chuck has brought forward, threw a lot of items over at the technology and communication part. Richard, you can help, uh, resolve a lot of these issues just by taking them to the committee and find out how many are supported.
Sure. We're gonna have a committee meeting.
All right.
I'll get those figures.
All right, today is, uh, twenty-one, and if you can get it accomplished by, uh.
October thirty-first?
Okay. One, two, uh, she's gotta publish on the second, so, speed it up a little bit, see if you can get it done before Wednesday, the, the thirty.
Thursday's the thirty-first, Thursday, thirty-first is Thursday.
I'm backing him up.
What do you need by?
I, my deadline for Saturday's paper.
Thursday.
I backed him up to the thirty.
Thursday noon.
Oh, okay.
So we do it on the thirty.
Thirty-first, but it is kinda hard to pull us all together, you know, it takes more than a half a day to.
What, what Chuck is asking for is actually to create a, you're asking for to create a new category, and in that category, to divide it up as you have projected.
Right.
Okay, see what you can do.
Okay.
You want a meeting on the thirtieth?
Uh, cable committee?
All right, the cable committee will. Now they're being agreed.
If, I've got the thirtieth open right now, uh.
Uh, let's see, twenty-nine, what's going on, twenty-nine? Twenty-nine or thirty, Lanny?
How many days do we have to publish?
Linda's gotta get it by the thirtieth.
I mean, the cable committee meeting, how many days?
Well, it has to be posted normally two days in advance.
Monday to twenty-eighth?
Beyond me.
Okay, check my schedule.
Tuesday's busy for me.
Yeah, you can do it on, uh, we'll do the agenda on forty-eight hours, no problem.
All right, we'll, we'll work this out.
Okay.
Monday, twenty-eighth.
All board members are invited to committee meetings.
Let them work it out. Okay, good to know.
Okay, let's go on to the Door County Humane Society, and thank you, an animal intake report. Letter dated October four, all part of your information, thanks for the thousand dollars, the activity for the year, with an explanation. In two thousand twelve, we donated two thousand, and apparently in two thousand and thirteen, we only donated one thousand. And then the source of the animals received, I can't believe we're so he- so high in the number of stray cats. And they do differentiate from those in the farm and those that are regular. What do we have for donation this year round?
Well, from the budget work session that we had on, um, October sixth.
Fifteen hundred.
I thought it was fifteen hundred was the consensus.
We had fifteen?
Fifteen hundred.
All right, so we'll let that one go as is?
Unless you wanna raise it.
No, thank you, Door County Planning Department, temporary uses, time period.
They had a road stick.
And maximum number of days? Yeah, okay. RPC will review all input on the, and it's November twenty-first meeting, and it has to do with the, uh, making revisions to temporary uses of the Door County zoning code, so, if we have any information. John, is that something you talked about before, or not?
At our meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it, and Victoria had said that she was going.
I was at, Danny hasn't been to training, that was a proposal that was in front of the RPC, and they decided to ask the towns for their input, because they thought the proposal was perhaps premature, they didn't have input from all the towns.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with temporary hosing units, right?
No.
Okay, let's make sure.
This has to do with temporary uses of facilities, it came up in particular because of a very large, uh, home in Ellison Bay that is being used for public events, and Ellison Bay wanted to know how many times they can do it, and how long, and how long the duration.
Okay, the current standard was ten days, then reduce it to five or seven, and seven days number consecutive from seven to three or four. Next item would be a notice of education discussion meeting, October twenty-nine at five-thirty, I thought earlier tonight that Victoria was gonna be going to that?
Correct.
All right, so that's October twenty-nine, and the adjoining agenda would indicate what this is gonna be about. Home water well water testing program through the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. Linda, you are the expert when it comes to testing of water. Why don't you give us the what for on that one? It's adjoining with other municipalities and using the service, as I understand it.
That came about, the clerk from Jacksonport noticed that the town of Ag Harbor and the village of Ag Harbor made a joint effort last year, working with the University of Stevens Point, whereby homeowners could collect a sample, bring it into the town office, and then that sample would be delivered to Stevens Point the following day. So the clerk from Jacksonport was wondering if Sebastopol, and perhaps the town of Gardner, would like to, uh, do that same program this coming year. Um, there's three different tests that the university offers, and, um, for a total of about a hundred dollars, you can get the, um, three different tests that they will perform. Uh, you can also have the same testing done, I checked with Eve from wastewater department, they will do lead, nitrate, and bacteriological testing as well, uh, for a cost of seventy-five dollars, plus five dollars shipping and handling. You pick up the bottles, you return them, and you test them. Um, so if we wanted to do something like this, we could explore it a little bit more, they've temporarily decided that July ninth, so all homeowners who want their wells tested need to bring that sample here on July eighth, that is the only date, and then they'd have to be delivered to Stevens Point the following day. I did place a call to, uh, Door County Soil and Water to see what kinda testing they did, however, I haven't received a call back from them, and what the cost might be there. So you're getting a discount because it's joint effort, and hopefully getting, they would ha- they would try to get at least one hundred samples to make it worthwhile. I think that if you don't even find one hundred homeowners to sign up, they probably won't do the project.
So you're gonna require identification, or they bring a, a sample and say it came from Dick Godelin's place?
Right, but you'd have to come in, pick up the water bottle, sample it on that one specific day, get it to the town office.
Okay.
And then to Stevens Point.
And someone has to drive it from the town, deliver it to Stevens Point.
Stevens Point, oh, and there's also an outfit in Appleton that will do the same thing, um.
Luxembourg as well.
Right, so.
So why are we getting involved in it?
Uh, like I said, Jacksonport was wondering if we wanted to jump on board, Jacksonport will be looking at it tomorrow night at their board meeting, so we can see what they come up with and.
The program is, it sounds great, but my concern would be the time period. If somebody takes their sample Sunday and brings it, nobody's gonna be here in the town to collect that sample, and they wanna go home, they're, they're vacationers up here, or, or part-time homeowners. Those samples are supposed to be handled within a twenty-four hour period, after that, the sample is spoiled, it, it, they can no longer test it. So, uh, I really have a concern with this, the way they want to set this up, that if the sample was delivered to the town on Monday, and we take time and drive it down to Stevens Point, it gets there on Tuesday, and they have a hundred samples to do, and they're talking seven days to do it. There's something wrong here.
I have, yeah, I have a feeling we might have to refrigerate those too, until we jump in the vehicle and go to Stevens Point.
Now we need a refrigerated vehicle.
Oh, and we'd have to advertise.
CDL.
Yeah, you know, this is.
We'd have to advertise as well.
Linda does, Linda does a great job with anything that we've ever asked her to do, and she does even a better job with things we don't ask her to do. There's no question about that, my question is, is there's enough other services out there that do this task, that I don't think we should be involved in it at all? Because it'll take a lot of time and effort on Linda's behalf to communicate, track, digest, and reiterate, and these people know those sources, so I.
She wants to drive to Stevens Point though.
Well, she can drive to Stevens Point tonight if she'd like.
I'd rather drive to Appleton.
We could drive to Luxembourg, I mean.
Okay, make it short, we're running out of time.
We do our well water testing every year, and the tests that they're offering will cost up to three hundred dollars at the Appleton facility. And so it's a value for, for my home to have it done at one time. And also the mapping that goes along with it, the town gets a full report of, of all of the wells that were tested. Nobody is identified, there are no names put on the map, it's a, a little bit more general than that, but it helps to look at some trends. That's why all the testing is done on the same day, otherwise it's not valid.
I've got some package prices here for forty-nine dollars, forty-five dollars, and twenty-seven, five dollars.
The results of the town of Ag Harbor and the village of Ag Harbor, uh, Door County Planning and Zoning is posting those on their website, so you can look at them. Now Liberty Grove did it, I think, in two thousand and eleven.
Okay, let's go on, we know now that our water here at the town is perfect, passes any and all tests. Right, Linda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Currently, yes.
Okay, privilege in a street agreement for replacement of a sewer line, this is something that we did once before. It's a document that says you can go across as long as you fix and repair, and gives the location, and they pick up the costs of, what was the total dollar expenditure, remember that?
Three hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Three ninety-seven fifty.
Has been paid.
And it's been paid?
It has been paid.
Okay, and it's met the eyes of our approval of our town attorney. So motion would be in order to approve the agreement and privilege in the street. And to give you a name, let's see.
DeGroot.
Yeah.
DeGroot, Paula DeGroot.
Paula DeGroot. And the location is on South Lake Drive. And the location is on South Lake Drive. Okay, Chuck, you were.
I'll move that we approve the agreement, privilege in the street for Paula DeGroot for the sewer line.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's excavate and place the sewer line from one parcel to across the road, South Lake Road. Questions or comments? Having the money in hand, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it's carried. Okay, the next is the County of Door Highway Department, intergovernmental agreement and a task check repair of highways that is ongoing is for calendar year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Repair of the highways and the regular tasks performed. But in L, it would make it incumbent on us to have the same rights for termination of the agreement as a county. So we would just put our amendment so that the county and the town may at any time for any reason or no reason terminate the agreement. They want a hundred twenty days, and we would stick with sixty. And on the next page, tests to be performed. Indicates what they're willing to do, removal of the trees, the signs, painting, striping of local roads would be upon a request, on special request, and naming the roads. And the snow plowing of the local roads of two inches or more, and that would include the spreading of sand and salt as needed. And I have added the limited use of the Oshkosh units. Advantageous for them to put them on the road to accomplish their mission, however, it takes two people to operate. And the Oshkosh trucks do not operate cheaply.
Could the town afford to buy a ruler so they can measure two inches?
Yeah, that's why you're going to be calling them if there's stuff.
Under task to be performed, on the last item, I believe they got a couple of words missing, or just says wash out of local roads. Wouldn't be repairs of or replacement of, or just temporary repairs.
All right. We'll add a temporary repair. Temporary repair there, too. Any other suggested changes? In the last page, snow removal agreements, the hitching posted shown as in ongoing, however, that will not be. I did get a call on one that will be added only if we get the paperwork, so. And that was on fifty-seven at Clark Lake Road. So with that, I need a motion to approve the intergovernment agreement and task checklist with Door County highways.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With correction?
With corrections.
I'll second.
Okay, any other suggestion? Comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the draft bill insert. This is what the clerk sends out as the informational sheet. Two thousand and thirteen was a blue form, I don't know what color we're going to be using this year. But it does go out with the property tax notice. The only question I had, Linda, is under the Sebastopol Town Hall and Community Center, and where it says regular office hours. And then it says Tuesday, am exception.
Am exception. Remember, the board graciously allows me?
Yeah, I know, but just.
Oh, a period, am period?
The am part, yeah.
Oh, a period, am period.
If you just wanted to say Tuesday morning, by appointment only, or whatever. That was the only change I could find.
We can do that.
Under my name, you can change my address also.
No.
You're kidding, officially?
Well, the address is changed, I have not moved yet. My telephone did.
And.
Still in Sturgeon Bay?
Four seven seven one.
Still in Sebastopol?
Yeah, still in Sebastopol.
Four seven seven one. Same phone number.
Yep.
All right, congratulations.
We'd have to do an audit of that premise, don't you think, Will?
Yeah, I think a personal.
I mean, that could be, that could very well be in the town of Sturgeon Bay or the city of Sturgeon Bay, not in Sebastopol.
And by the way, I did get my first cable bill, and it is to the town of Sebastopol.
All right, commendable. So now you can watch nine eighty-six. All right, and for those of you planning your year two thousand and fourteen, our open book is scheduled for May thirtieth at ten o'clock here at the town hall. And the board review is for Monday, June twenty-three, at one o'clock, again at the town hall. Other net, a very good item, and nicely done. Approval of the vouchers bills and claims. I think they made their way around, correct?
They're working on it right now. Moved to approve vouchers bills and claims, September twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen through October twenty-one, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Notion made in second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's carried. Correspondence came from, the county board will consider the matter of resource plan committee, zoning amendment petition by Ryan Heckbart. This streak, and that will be done at tomorrow, county board. RPC recommends denial of the zoning amendment petition for the following reasons, one, two, three, and four. And the preliminary calculations for the summary of aid program connecting highways, general transportation aids of one eighty, is that the same amount we have in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. And the Omni Group requests for proposals, the mailing list, the Northeast Wisconsin Zone Four transmission projects for the two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty-seven. And the last sheet is information as to the two thousand and thirteen Sturgeon Around the Bay Street Art Project. There were a lot of very ornate and other type of final products. And it comes with the manufacturer and the dollar amount of which he sold. So it's a good venture for them, and nicely done.
It's one of the largest moneymakers for the Sturgeon Bay Visitor Center for, in the year. They do have other fundraisers throughout the year, sidewalk days, Westfoss, Jefferson Street days, and that. Street art is one of the biggest.
Okay, the announcement, zoning classification core area of Almy Institute and City is Wednesday, October twenty-third. Paul, we'll expect you to be there. Talked about the Kiway, Byway kiosk, ribbon cutting on October thirty-one. The Turkey Trot is November second. And Sebastopol Historical Society salutes the Veteran Day Program Sunday, November three at one o'clock. And Door County Unit of Wisconsin Taxpayer Towns Association will meet at Nassau Beach Town Hall November seventh at seven o'clock. And the Veterans Day Honorary Room will be at Sebastopol School on Monday, November eleventh at eleven a.m. Budget hearing, the special media and town board, next will be November eighteen, beginning at six a.m., six p.m. And do you have any agenda items for our next meeting? If you do, make sure you give me a notice, and the motion would be in order to adjourn. Unless you want to stay here all night.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commendable. I'll leave in second now, enjoy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Byway, adjourned.